Okay, so we are all here. So I'd like it is uh we'll give it a minute. It's only six fifty nine. No need to rush.
Is that a new?
Seven P M. So I'd like to call the Dartmouth Planning Board Meeting of December of November fourth twenty twenty four to order with a roll call vote. Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis.
Yes.
Heliar Rosa.
Yeah.
And Kevin Mellow, yes. Uh please keep in mind that this meeting is being recorded. Agenda item number one is a public hearing, so I will need a um vote, a motion in a second to recess the planning board's regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding scenic roadway request by Eversource.
So moved.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, second.
Kevin.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Margaret Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis.
Yes.
Heliar Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Thank you. Um. So I believe we have represented some Eversource.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Would you like me to get going?
Yes, please introduce yourself and go right in.
Uh yeah, so Kyle Berry, I work with Eversource Energy, so I'm here tonight to discuss a two different projects. We have wire upgrades going on along Rocka Dundee and Hicksville Road. And so we are going to have to do some tree maintenance to get those new wires in into place. And so I'm here to discuss that with you. We've got about two miles of new wire going in along Rocka Dundee and around a third of a mile around Hicksville. And so this is being done to increase the capacity and voltage in the area. We're going to be tying two circuits together. So right now, Rocka Dundee is fed from two different directions with a with a gap in the middle. So we're going to be closing that gap, increasing the voltage capacity of the wire. So you have better storm resilience, so we can uh power more electric uh electric capacity in the area. I know there's some solar going in in various parts in town, so a lot of times we have to upgrade wires as new solar is coming online and also just new development, people charging more cars, more uh more electric appliances, that sort of thing, so variety of reasons that's uh that's happening. And uh but so the bottom line to talk about the vegetation tonight, uh most of Rocka Dundee, I'll start with Rocka Dundee first. We have existing wires and poles down down most of that road except one particular location. So the majority of the road is going to be pruning. And I can walk through, I can I might do a share screen in a moment just to walk you through a little presentation I put together. Uh so pruning along the majority of the road, there are a few trees to be removed that are going to be right uh right in conflict with the wires. So I have those detailed out. And uh I'm just gonna try a share screen here, see if I can do it. Oh. Someone may have to accept that share screen.
Uh D C T V.
Kyle, you should be all set.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I'm not sure if you could see my screen or what.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Might have to hit share again.
Oh, let me try it. Uh here we go.
There you go.
Okay, great. Just try to move uh this. Okay, great. So here's just the the actual work order. We're going to be working off of. It shows all the existing pole locations in red. Most of those poles are going to be replaced, newer poles. Uh we're starting at Tannery Lane and then going down Rocka Dundee uh for approximately two miles. And I'll just kind of scroll through this quickly. It's it's just basically the the overview plan from above. Uh green poles are new locations. They're generally in line with the existing pole line. If I get to the location. See. Okay, we're at the corner of Patomsko in Rocka Dundee here. Uh slight change in how the wire is running around that intersection. As you can see, some of the green poles again are new locations or uh poles there. Keep going down Rocka Dundee. I'm gonna try to point out the location where there's currently a gap uh in the wire, because that's where the majority of the tree work is going to be. And I guess I should mention, we're we're going all the way down toward the end. Uh we'll be ending at Bakerville Road approximately. And so we're between Bakerville all the way uh back to Tannery Lane. So the location right here uh near Fieldstone Farm Drive. I'll just do a street view. So currently, our wire ends right here. It's extending through this tree line. This is where the gap in the electric wire currently exists, and this is where the the majority of the trees are that I have flagged to be cut down. You can see where there's a a telephone wire currently there, and that's roughly where the power line will be, though probably fifteen feet higher than that. And so you can see when we when we move that electric wire, it's going to be straight through the crowns of all these trees in a row. They're all leaning hard over the road, and the majority of these, there's really nothing to prune back to. We do lean toward pruning whenever possible. But when we we try to uh stick to the standard of, there's an N Z standard. You basically don't want to cut more than one third of a branch is off of a tree. Uh if you do have to go beyond that, most times it's advisable to cut the tree down just because it's likely to die in the future, or it's just it just becomes disfigured. So that's the case of really most of the trees along this section of road right here. So we go, we'll be coming along that corner. And then crossing the road right here. Same situation right here along this tree line. Now just bring up another another little map that I've got, little mapping program that we use to plot uh where work will be done. So here's Rocka Dundee again, and this is where I was just showing you the uh the street view right here. All these dots represent trees that are going to be in the way, are gonna need to be cut down in this location. And so uh we've reached out to the director butters next to all of these trees. Some have replied positively and they're in agreement. Some have simply not replied at all. We haven't heard any feedback from a few homeowners uh including the owner of this house five twenty three, which is which is where some of this work is going to be. We have not heard back from that person. So I haven't had any uh any pushback per se, any any refusal to do work from any homeowners. It's simply uh no response from from some of them. Uh let's see, why don't I go through the PowerPoint here real quick? This is just detailing out the trees specifically. Uh I'll just go through my whole list of removals. This is again, an aerial near south, near house seven eighty six. We've got a tree here. It's an oak tree. Uh it's a few feet off the wire, but I did notice some mushrooms on this, so it's likely gonna fail in in the near future, so I'd like to cut that one down. Uh this is an oak tree. Someone has already agreed to cut this down near house six eighty. I believe it's private uh in the homeowner did sign off, but it's it's probably uh somewhat borderline uh in its location. It's a dead oak. I don't think there'd be too much objection to that one. Uh right at the corner of Patomsko in Rocka Dundee, we've got a cherry uh cherry tree leaning hard over the road. It's very low clearance along the existing wire, and now there's going to be three wires in that same location. It'll probably be right in the middle of three wires, so I don't I don't see any way to save that one. Uh that's another one we we reached out to. I haven't heard back from that particular uh property of butter. But I'm fairly confident that one is on the the town road layout. Okay, so this is just to the west of that Fieldstone Drive. And we've already got one new pole installed, so you can kind of see where they're approximately going to be. We've got the old pole right sorry about that. We got the old pole next to it. It's quite a bit shorter. The new pole is quite a bit taller. We're right through the crowns of several of these trees. The next pole was right here. You can see just behind my uh just behind the foliage. And this was uh where I showed you the street view previously, that same situation. There's just currently a phone wire, and we're going to be upgrading to that three-phase electric wire. And they do have a new pole in that situation also in that in that location. Uh you can just see all the trees, vegetation, just leaning on that phone wire, and all of that uh really needs to be removed, pushed pushed back quite a ways. This is just from uh looking looking toward the west from that same such same uh location right here. Yeah, I just made a couple of different views of that same spot, so you could see. Yeah. And I did try to pick just the worst trees. In other words, the the ones that would be most affected by the work. Um you know, we we like to prune when we can, but I don't want to leave a something that's not aesthetically pleasing behind a topped tree or something with with no branches left on it. This is just a little bit further down the road. There's another dead oak tree that someone has already signed off on uh near Two Part in Hill Road. And here's the tree in question. One other oak tree a little bit further down here. That's also near that house two part in hill. Uh I believe I can get away with just one of these stems. There's a there's a two-stemmed oak right here, and one is uh very close to the existing wire. And again, once we put three wires in that same location, I don't think we're gonna have room. So most of this will be prunable, and just that one, I might felt we could not get around. Uh and going back to Tannery Lane, this is right at the corner of Tannery and uh and Rocka Dundee. There's a a maple right there that's in very poor shape. You can see all of the uh the damage that's existing. It was two stems and one already broke off. And the uh the remaining one has some pretty serious defects, so we'd like to take that one down. Uh you can see on the uh the photo here and the aerial where that is. Okay, so that was it for Rocka Dundee. And now uh Hicksville Road, there was just one location where I needed to cut down three trees, so it's these three pine trees. Similar situation, we're upgrading from a single-phase primary up to three-phase primary. And this was just one very tight location. Uh I put a little arrow by a new pole. So they're actually moving the wire slightly even closer to those three pines in that location, and it does not look like we can snake it by without contacting the trunks of those those three pines. Uh so that was another house we'd reached out to, and we have not heard back from them yet, whether positive or negative feedback. But I do believe they're on the road layout from what I can determine. And the rest of that Hicksville location was just uh just pruning. Uh there's existing wire and uh the pole line is not expected to move. This is just a view from a the other angle of those same three pines right here. That was about it. I had for slides. Let me see if there's anything else I could show you. Yeah, this was just going back to Rocka Dundee. This is just the aerial again of our our uh program here. You can see the the little dots sporadically removed a few trees, and then there's that one location with the with quite a few right here around Fieldstone Farm Drive. Uh so I'm not sure what else I need to tell you, or if you have questions for me.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um being this is a public hearing, uh we first ask for any input for or against any of these trimmings from the public. Is there anyone here in uh D C T V? Please help me look for raised hands um or any indication that the public would like to speak at this time. Okay, I am not seeing any. If anyone uh
Mister Chair, I don't see anybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Um so at this time, I will now turn the questions to the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions for um Eversource?
I do, uh Mister Chairman.
Please have the floor.
Uh Kyle, thanks for uh your your presentation. Excuse me. When you say you reach out to the butters, uh how how do you guys reach out? By letter, by call, by both?
We've left a notification at their at their residence at least twice for for a butter. Uh with contact information. I have a a work planner that does that for us, so and uh you know, we've heard back from some of those some of those people and and some just, we got no return.
Okay. Uh and I I think I I saw a reference in in my packet that you worked in concert with the tree warden.
Yes, we did take a a drive down this uh uh Tim and I, I want to say over the summer, maybe it was August or so. Yeah, uh he's your tree warden and D P W director. So uh yes, Tim and I, uh Tim Barber. We took a drive down and I showed him all the pruning and the the trees that we expected to remove, and uh I believe he agreed. That was my understanding.
Okay. Uh and for the trees that you have to cut down, do you have any kind of a replacement strategy or replacement policy? I guess not a strategy. But uh not even necessarily replacing it with a similar tree uh in a different area or or even just some some low foliage. They they wouldn't, they could grow but not necessarily get in the way.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Uh we we could definitely do some replacement trees. I I wouldn't necessarily say I've got about thirty trees to cut on my list. It's in that wooded area. I wouldn't I wouldn't say I'd I'd commit to thirty, but I can definitely find some some good locations on that street on Rocka Dundee uh where we could do some planting, whether it's a a shorter growing flowering tree, like flowering cherry or flowering apple, or if I could find a location that's not underneath wires, we might be able to put a full-size tree there. And uh I was I was just looking at possible locations over the last week, so I've I've got a couple of properties in mind which are not necessarily at the work site, but maybe you know, nearby on the same road on Rocka Dundee. So I I tend to look for an open field situation or open front yard that has a a maintained grass area, so we can we can put something there and and the homeowners can hopefully mow around it and keep the vines off it and that sort of thing. Uh the uh the locations where we're doing the actual cutting, I think there's going to be enough trees left still there just behind the work area that we're not going to be exposing uh a wide-open area. I mean, if that did happen where there's a a hole, we could certainly put something back in that same vicinity. But I I guess I would prefer to plant more in those yard, maintained yard situations that are they're nearby, if that if that works for you.
Yeah, yeah, that that works and makes sense. And likewise, if it's in an area that's already heavily wooded, you know, it probably doesn't even merit a replacement. Um because it's it it already has enough. Uh but uh I was just just more curious than anything else.
Yeah, and I could I could absolutely, you know, work with Tim on that as well and bring him in and figure out where where he thinks uh trees should go, so.
Great, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Mister Chairman, I have just one question.
Sure.
Kyle, when are you gonna start this work, do you think?
I I think we will do this before the end of the year, so uh you know, I've got I've got to get it lined up. If it was approved today, uh you know, I'd probably be looking at late November.
Okay, thank you. Before the snow.
Ideally.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, so I'm not seeing any more questions uh from the public or from the board. So at this time, uh the board will need to make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion. Okay, I think I uh I saw the light for Heliar Rosa making the motion to close the public hearing. And was that Nick Cyclopatis with the second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, Heliar Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Uh so at this time, I will need um
Motion.
A motion to grant permission from the board, a motion in a second. We are now back in our our regular um administrative.
Uh yeah, I'll make a motion to um approve the request as submitted.
Okay. Uh so we have a ma- a motion made by Heliar Rosa, second by
Second.
Kevin Estes, all in favor, Heliar Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good. Kyle, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Uh so next, we have a continued public hearing um for four thirteen State Road. To get us started on this, this is a continuation, so we don't need to vote to get into it. Um so to start off with this, I I know there was an email sent this afternoon by Ross. Uh I will have Ross do the intro um and explain where we are and what we need.
Okay. Thank you. So just a reminder, this is the site plan review application for four thirteen State Road to propose to renovate an existing three-family residential structure and three-car garage. Uh the proposed renovations will convert the existing building layout to a proposed hair salon and two-unit apartment. Um so essentially, like I mentioned in my email this afternoon, um you'd have a couple of options with this. Um one being uh to request an extension in agreement with the applicant. Um the other would be that this would have to be uh ultimately denied and restarted uh based on the timeline if an extension was not agreed upon. Uh or lastly, uh to approve with the condition that the D P W's requirements would be met on the final plan set. Um so at this point, I think I saw that the engineer was on um hopefully his connection is good. Peter, if you're available, I can hand it off to you now if you'd like to present.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Um so uh I can share my screen and go through it. I know uh uh two weeks ago, we went through the presentation. I think we've hammered out um a a lot of the questions that were asked. Uh I know Margaret wasn't uh available for that hearing, so if it's okay with you, Mister Chair, I'd like to present it, so to give uh Margaret an opportunity and the uh the remainder of the board an opportunity uh to just maybe answer any questions that are still outstanding.
Peter, I I have to tell you that I did look at the video, so everybody out there in TV land knows, and I signed the contract. So I did look at the uh meeting, even though I wasn't there. I'm up to date. Thank you, though, Peter.
Okay, do you do you want me to run through it or just put the plan up?
That's up to the chair. That's up to the chair.
So uh where where do you at at this time? Um it really, I mean, it it's up to the board if they would want to take a vote to allow this to be completed administratively, which I know that since Christine O'Grady has left, we have not uh we have not uh basically taken, used that method. Um so I really would like to hear from the board if that that would be an option for for them.
I'm not comfortable. I'm not comfortable with that, uh Kevin, until we get a plan, or I'm not comfortable uh doing it that way.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. Just looking for a consensus, that's all, from the other two board members.
I'll support Margaret.
Okay.
I'm on board with the board, Kevin.
Okay, so uh Peter, with that information at hand, uh I'll turn the the put the wall back in your court and let you proceed as you'd like.
Okay, no, I I mean, the the I I would like to um hearing hearing the board members. Um I was I was hoping to to get a an approval with the condition for the uh D P W snowmolder. Uh and and the reason I'm I say that is we're getting closer to the winter months um and um uh the my applicant has applied for uh some utility work uh in the roadway and and without the the approval from um this board, uh he's not allowed to uh apply for those utility permits uh to get the the road opening permits to put in the uh uh the uh fire suppression line that's needed uh and also upgrade uh the uh the water to the facility. Um so I was hoping based on that, if the the board would consider um uh a doing and approve with the condition. Uh I know you haven't. Um this is a unique case uh because we are sort of our backs to the wall uh with these utilities uh in trying to line up the work um based on trying to get an approval uh has been a little little tough for the applicant. Uh I have I have been in contact with uh Paul Duat at D P W. Uh I know he hasn't had the time to review it uh based on a couple of things that have happened uh in the last three weeks in town that took precedence uh over the review of the of the uh the stormwater regulations. I mean, the new stormwater re- uh report that was completed. Um so I I maybe ask again, would would that with that said, would the board consider possibly doing it uh for this case? Um just because we're we are trying to get some of the utility work in. I think I've addressed all the um site plan uh comments um in the last two meetings. Um you know, we've worked together in getting the plans to where they are today um to to accommodate the uh the additional ten parking spots or get thirteen cars off the roadway, and we're really just waiting on the stormwater um uh approval from D D P W, which uh I believe I've satisfied Paul. It's just unfortunately a couple of things happened in town that Paul had to deal with, and he was short-staffed too, so um that's just my my plea in seeing if the uh the board would entertain it.
Mister Chair, could I have?
Yes.
Could I have a couple of questions um when I was uh reviewing um? I guess the first question I have, Peter, is when did you get these plans in this time?
Uh we got them. We got them in on Thursday.
You got them in this past Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, then D P W could never get it done in one day, Peter. Okay. Um and two, I have a question. When I was watching the uh video, how many waivers did you request? Was it three or six?
Uh hold on. Let me pull up the PDF. Uh with six waivers.
It's six waivers, okay. And my last question uh to you, Peter, is normally we we make all the plans stamped by an L A uh land landscape architect. Is normally we, we make all the plans stamped by an LA, uh, lan- landscape architect. And so that really is something that I really like to see on all the plans. I know this is a smaller. Uh, a smaller site, but, uh, I'll leave that up to my board, but I, I think that, oh, and I like to see an LA stamp everything.
So per the bylaws, it's not required, Margaret, uh, anything under twenty-five parking spots. Um, a landscape architect is not needed to stamp the plans?
Uh, I know, okay, uh, I just, you know, if you have. If you had one, I would like to have seen it stamped.
Yeah, I don't, I personally don't have a one on staff. It would be an extra, uh, cost incurred by the client to, to have a, a, a landscape architect stamp it.
Okay, um, I did read that in, uh, Ross's notes, but I just thought I would ask, okay?
Okay, anyone, any other questions from the board? Okay, so, um. What's the pleasure of the board? Anyone, anyone's mind change from, uh, the consensus I took earlier?
No, no.
No, okay, uh, so Peter, I'll, I'll put the ball back in your court again. What, what would you like us to do?
With that said, uh, Kevin, well, we can continue and extend it.
Okay, so you'd like, uh, we would need a motion to grant an extension to the applicant. I'll need that motion, I'll need a second, please.
Motion made to extend as requested.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Do we need to condition the motion on the applicant agreeing to extend, uh, the deadline?
That, that's what we are going to offer them, an extension by this vote.
Okay, alright.
It, Ross, am I correct in the way I'm moving forward?
That's my understanding as well, yes.
Okay, okay.
Are you asking if this motion should have a date included in it?
No, no, I, I, I was asking that, I mean, there are two things. We're agreeing to extend it, but, uh, eh, we, we also want to make sure that the. Uh, applicant is agreeing to the extension. So we're not going past, we, we can extend it as long as we want, but we can also extend it past a, a required due date.
Understood.
Correct, and, and he, he is saying that he'd like us to give him an extension, so.
Okay.
Uh, Ross, do we need a, a date certain or, or a day, uh, thirty-day extension? Is that appropriate? I think that's. In the past, Margaret, if you remember, is that how we have done it?
Well, it depends, um, uh, Ross, do you think that the DPW would be able to get these plans, uh, reviewed in the next week?
Um, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain. Um, there's, I, I wouldn't be able to guarantee a date that they'd be done by, but.
Then I think a thirty-day, uh, Kevin is, is called for.
Okay. So do I have that motion? Motion, okay. Um, so motion made by Margaret Sweet, second by Nick Cyclopatis. All in favor, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Alright, Peter, thank you, we'll.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Um, one procedural question, if I can?
Yes.
We still have the, um, public hearing open?
So we voted to close out EverSource's public hearing. We just voted to, um. Can, give an extension for public hearing number two.
Okay.
And now we need a vote to continue the public hearing for four thirteen State Road.
Kevin, can I just jump in?
Yes, Peter.
I also, because the special permit is tied to the site plan. Do we get an extension for this, the special permit because we did not close that out last hearing? Cause it was all based on, uh, everyone agreeing on the six waivers that we needed in the new parking, uh, configuration.
Well, ye- yes, the, what we were just voting on, what we were just discussing was the special permit.
Okay.
That, that's how I was, I was talking about item number two, uh, on our agenda, which is continued public hearing. Um, for the special permit for four thirteen State Road. So we need to continue the public hearing now. And then.
With the site plan.
Go, then, once we continue the public hearing, we granted the extension, we're gonna continue the public hearing. We're gonna go back into administrative items and continue or.
The, the site plan review.
Site plan review.
Yes, the site plan review would be granted the extension.
Will be granted the extension.
Administrative.
Okay. So we have to finish. Continued public hearing, agenda item number two first.
Yes.
Okay, sorry to jump the gun there.
No, no, no worries. Um, so we already did. The extension for item number two. So now we have to vote to continue the public hearing for item number two, which is special permit for four thirteen State Road.
Moved.
Motion made by Kevin Estes?
Second.
Second by Nick Cyclopatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Okay, so we're done with our public hearings for the night. We've already closed out number one. We've continued number two. We are moving on to administrative item number one, which is site plan review for four thirteen State Road. Do I have a motion to continue?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Margaret Sweet, kept second by Kevin Estes, all in favor, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes.
Thank you all, have a good night, see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Peter.
Good night.
Thank you.
On to, um, administrative items, number two, site plan review for six-ten State Road.
Okay. So, this site plan review application is for proposed vertical addition to an existing upholstery shop at six-ten State Road. Um, originally, this project was gonna be in addition to the back. But based off of lot coverage issues, they decided to change that project to now just be in addition vertical. So their lot coverage is not changing. As a result of that, they're also not changing their landscaping, they're not changing, um, the parking. Uh, and they also had ZBA approval for the expansion of a non-conforming use. Um, which is why they're coming back at this time, because originally they had started a site planner view application. Way back when this was proposed to be an expansion in the back. So they're just wrapping up their site planner app, uh, site planner view application, excuse me, to, um. Be for the vertical expansion instead, so I think I saw the applicant present, um. George, if you're able to un, oh, George, if you wanna present it all, um, now would be a good time.
Alright. And also, uh, this is George from six-ten State Road. Uh, we've met like, uh, six months ago, and this case, it's been like for two years. We did the change from the back addition to going vertical up. We're not changing any lot coverage. We've worked with the DPW regarding, uh, the dry well, everything is gonna prove to the DPW as well. And, uh, we're at the point just to, uh, uh, get the site plan, so we can continue to the, to the building permit.
Okay, very good, thank you, George. Um, any questions from the board?
I think it's pretty cut and dry, Kevin. They're just going up, they're not changing, really, they're not changing any of the site.
I agree.
Mister Chair, one clarifying question?
Yes.
Uh, this addition, the second floor addition, the second floor is not for public access, confirmed? I guess for George.
Oh, that's.
George, can you answer that?
It's gotta be for our office.
For your office only?
Not for the public?
No.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Nick Cyclopatis to approve site plan review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Helio Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Administrative item number three, site plan review for five eighty-one Fons Corner Road.
Okay, the site plan review is for a proposed outpatient building to be added to the existing South Coast Behavioral Health Hospital. That is currently at five eighty-one Fons Corner Road, which is map sixty-eight lot twenty-eight. Um. The applicant is bringing forward these plans essentially at this time, just to present and kind of. Open the project up for discussion, but the plans, at this point, um. Planning comments and DPW comments at least have not been addressed at this time, so this is mostly just, um. To kind of open up the floor for any initial questions or an initial feedback. And I think there's the engineer who I've been working with is present, Pablo, at this time, you can feel free to present if you'd like.
Yes, sir, so I have with me, uh, Darcy, who is the CEO of South Coast, as well as Adam Bradley with Acadia. And Jim Moner from Stango Hill, just to answer any questions, should they need. He, so, um, let me see if I can share my screen with you guys, if that is. So the first image I would like to bring up is just the, uh. Is an area of the existing South Coast behavioral, of, of this existing hospital, which is just off Fons Corner Road. Uh, there have been some previous additions, which you might remember from the past, and. The one that we are proposing is just off of this southern entrance here. Into, you know, in this corner of the existing property. So we're proposing a, let me bring up the architectural renderings. To proposing a one-story building, which is mainly for patients who have, you know, either an appointment or. A, a, an, an individual appointment or an appointment for like group therapy sessions, uh, just to come in for the day, they're not gonna be spending the night. Um. It's going to be, uh, just one floor, and here's, we, we're proposing this parking here, and here is that. That southern drive off of, here's Fons Corner Road, and here's that southern access drive, which will allow patients to drive in. We have ADA spaces and, uh, you know, this is all going to be, uh, proposed, proposed parking. Um, here is another view, uh, if you were closer to the building. Um, and then here we have a view, if you were to drive by. They also screen there. And then this, these last two renderings will just show what the site would look like off of Fons Corner Road, if you were to drive by on, uh, either lane. And that is pretty much the overview of what we are proposing.
Okay. So, um, keep in mind, the board, this is just a, an initial review, this is not a, um. So any constructive, uh, feedback at this point would be hopefully added to their, uh. Final presentation. So if anyone has any questions or comments.
I think it looks good, uh, from my perspective, I have a profound amount of respect that they are looking. To provide perhaps a different environment for those that are there for the day, rather individuals or group setting. Um, in comparison to entering a facility in or longer-term care hospital. That has a profound effect on the individuals that are receiving treatment, and I think this is a great option for the mental health sector in our community.
Thank you.
I agree with Nick, I think that it's, uh, it's an option that i- is needed in our community.
Um, Pablo, are there any expected waivers that would be asked for or hardships?
Well, yes, the only waiver we are requesting is for the parking space sizes. We are proposing. On nine by nineteen, just to kind of, uh. Just to, just to make this parking space, make the parking lot a little bit smaller than.
Uh, yeah, and I guess, yeah, to elaborate on that, so the, uh. The original hospital was designed under the previous code, which allowed nine by nineteen parking spaces. I understand that code was changed to ten by twenty, we're really just trying to keep. Uh, same parking stall sizes that are on the campus currently. Uh, we also had a question as to whether or not the campus, you know, already was, uh, you know, could abide by the old code. Um, given the previous developments there, but in any case, that, that's the only waiver that we're requesting. If you have any feedback on that, I would love to hear it too.
Um, if I remember correctly, I, I was on the board when this was first built, and then when it was added on to. Uh, you were able to show. That if parking became a problem, you had additional space to the rear of the current building. That if, uh, it became an issue, you could develop additional parking spots or enlarged parking spots. Am I correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct, and yeah, I was the original designer on the original hospital as well. And so, yeah, it was actually, a lot of the parking spaces you're referring to are on the north side. Um, but, but you're right, and then that issue also came up. Uh, with, I know the previous edition that CEC helped with, that we were involved in that as well, helping Steve Geo, so. Uh, so yes, you're right, that is the case, and I, I think, you know, after, uh, gosh, it's been open almost ten years now, uh, you know, parking hasn't, hasn't been a problem, so. I like to think that that, uh, that, that variance was, was, um, intelligently granted back in the day.
Okay.
Question from me, uh, two questions. Is the, is the, this request for the, the size of the parking or typical parking space? Is it more to align with the existing, um, parking space sizes? Or are you running into any kind of hardship in providing the ten by twenty?
Right, it, it's more about, um, trying to be wise with our stormwater management, not produce, you know, un- unnecessary runoff. Uh, and then also just the, the, the size nine by nineteen is, is sufficient that we found, and so it's, it's a combination of what you're saying to match. Existing and then also, um, you know, not provide any greater impacts to stormwater than we have to.
And then my other question, um, this structure, um. It looks like it's designated as a business occupancy, as an office space, is that correct? Not an institutional?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
No. Uh, I'll just share the, I'll share with the folks presenting that, uh, I hope the waiver slash concession that, uh, there was. They're requesting, um, is considered, considering other concessions that have been made around town. Um, I wish them the best, and I think this is a great project.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I think you've got, uh, what you needed from the board for tonight.
Yes, sir.
If you have any other questions, I'm sure Ross will be able to help you. Um, we look forward to seeing your, your final product.
Thank you, sir, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night. Alright, uh, gender item number four, the minutes of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Wish to file? Sorry.
Okay.
Motion made to accept and file.
Motion made by Nick Cyclopatis, was that a second by Kevin Estes?
It was.
Okay, second by Kevin Estes, all in favor, Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Uh, Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Myra Sweet?
I have to abstain.
That's correct, and Kevin Mellow, yes. Very good, correspondence, town of Westport. Any, I guess we really can't question what the town of Westport's doing, um. But, uh, any questions or just an acknowledge and file?
Motion to acknowledge and file.
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mellow, yes. Uh, FYI, uh, for your information, old business slash new business. Um, questions on ours, zone and Board of Appeals? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, um. On ours. So, um, we can move on to subcommittee reports. Has anyone had any meetings?
I have not.
Go ahead.
No, I have not, Kevin.
Oh, uh, I attended my first, uh, serpent meeting. And, uh, I was impressed with, uh, the, the, uh, assets that Serpent actually provides. And the depth of which, uh, and, uh. Uh, they were reviewing what, what was done and, uh, what they want to do, uh, in the near term. So it was not, uh, a, a very heavy meeting, except for the standpoint that, uh, for me. It was, uh, a lot of listening and, uh, I look forward to helping our town leverage. The, uh, assets and services that they, uh, they can have and can lend.
Okay, um, glad you enjoyed it, that's great.
I enjoyed this one.
Too many, my.
Good luck, Kevin.
Yeah. Um, so moving on, uh, if that's the last for the subcommittee reports. Um, planners report, Ross?
Uh, the only thing that I have for you is the planning consultant hours for approval. There was, um, we've had a couple of larger, uh, site planner view projects come through that you'll be seeing in the near future. Um, hence the uptick in hours that he, uh, contributed last week, or the week before, rather.
Okay, um. And technical reviewers need and any, what was the last that you? Where, where do we stand with that?
The last one that we had, believe it or not, was the, um, five eighty-one Fons Corner Road project that just presented. Um, they were at the last one, we have one tomorrow. Uh, that's for a proposed A and R project, which is kind of atypical of what those technical review meetings are for, but. Um, he had a handful of questions on a phone call with me. That kind of encompassed multiple departments, so we both decided that it would be best that we take advantage of the pre-scheduled technical viewer meeting. Um, so it's only that one presentation, it's, it should be pretty brief, but it's a good opportunity to open up the floor to other departments.
And that's ten o'clock?
That is correct.
Okay, was anyone able to make that meeting tomorrow?
I'm sorry, I can't, Kevin, tomorrow.
Okay, I will try to make it, Ross.
Okay, no worries either way, it's just an A and Rs, which I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, so if you can't, that's okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have the, um, you need a vote from the board for the. Looks like seven and a half hours.
Motion made.
Motion made by Nick Cyclopatis?
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor, Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Absolutely.
Heliya Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Thank you, Ross.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, uh, under the chairperson's report, uh, the only, uh, the main thing here obviously is our town planner. Um, I have had no correspondence directly, but in reviewing the select boards. Uh, agenda, they are taking up, uh. That in executive session today as far as negotiations and, um. The union, how it works with the union package, um, to extend an official. Compensation package. Um, other than that, I have had no, no connection, no contact whatsoever from. Either HR or, um, Advent, Town Advent, so. Um, I will keep everyone posted.
Mister Chair, one comment if I can?
Yes.
Uh, I wasn't able to attend, um, that meeting, but I just want to acknowledge, um, I did go back and see. Um, the interview process that this board conducted with the select board and I just wanted to commend. Um, everyone on how they approached the interview and how they handled it, um, just really well done.
Okay, well, sorry, sorry you missed it. Um. We'll take it from there though. So, any questions?
I appreciate Heliya taking the time to be, uh, appreciate Heliya taking the time to watch that, because that was, quite frankly, I think, uh. A big role that our board played and it's nice to know, although not present, uh, he took the time. To become aware of how we handled it and what our positions were and so on, so I appreciate you, Heliya.
I do too, uh, Heliya, that's very nice of you, I know you're busy.
Okay, thank you, Heliya. Um, alright, that's, that's all I have for the chairman's report right now.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Number seven.
Before, before we make that motion, I have a quick question. Are we, um, are we set up to stay, I forgot what we decided with Zoom, are we contend through March or April, was there a date out there?
No one has asked, uh, any different and the governor says that we can.
Excellent.
Um, and that's what we had voted for back in April.
Right.
So unless somebody asks me nicely that to change what we have voted. Um, I don't see any reason to make any change as a board.
Neither do I, somebody asked a vague question and, um, I wasn't sure if they were fishing or if I missed a memo. So that's why I asked the question I just asked.
Nope, i- and if, if we're asked, I will ask you as a board.
Right.
Not my choice, it's one of five, so.
Right.
We'll take it at that time. Okay.
You want, uh, you want the young kid to do this?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn by Heliya Rosa, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nick Cyclopatis, all in favor, Heliya Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Thanks, guys, yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Thank you.